... again at 3:30 in the morning.
Well, maybe you.
Introducing everyone around the table so that we all know who's here because our first, well, some of the items that we're going to be addressing will include our commissioners from the Economic Development Commission. So, I'm Elizabeth Kouts, I'm the mayor.
Michelle Brooks, City Staff.
Mary Sherry, City Council.
I'm Craig Gibling from the City Staff.
Ari Soki, EDC.
Jenny Faulkner, Community Development Director for the city.
BJ Jungman, City Staff.
Rich Vanderlan, a manor of the commission.
King Grisini, EDC.
Dan Healy, City Council.
Perfect timing, perfect timing.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Thank you. Okay, and the first item on our agenda this evening is the senior rental statistics in relation to the city owner occupied goals. And presenting this evening is Jenny Faulkner, our Community Development Director, and BJ Jungman, our Fire Chief. Jenny?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and commissioners. First, I'd like to thank the commissioners, we had to adjust our schedule a little bit. The Fire Chief has a presentation in another city after this, so that's why we're going ahead of you, so thank you for that. The discussion on senior rental tonight was identified at a recent city council meeting where there were some questions, basically about the number of senior rental assisted living and the cost of city services, particularly EMS services, to those facilities. As you know, the council has a goal of 70/30 in our ends and outcomes, and that is something certainly that we'll be taking into consideration with this discussion. I'll talk about the percentages, and then BJ will get into the EMS figures. Here's how the outcome reads, and this is all in the background as well. Under neighborhood outcome, we talk about how people feel about our housing stock, and that's where the goal of 70% owner occupied, 30% is identified. We report on that every year, and so how do we figure it? Just want to give you a background so you know what goes into this number. We start with the census figure, the most current census figure, and then we add units to that as permits are issued. If we know they're rental, we'll add them to the rental; if we know they're owner occupied, we'll add them as owner occupied. If they're supposed to be owner occupied and someone comes in and gets a rental license for them, we don't make any adjustments for those. There's just, we didn't have our rental license when I started doing this 12 years ago, so we just started with the 2000 census and then added every year based on permit activity. So then that figure gets to our percentages, that's included in the ends and outcomes. The good thing about this number is it's your number, it's your goal, and we can change it however you want to. So, the most recent data that we have then is from the April 1st, 2010 census, and of that we have a little over 25,000 households here in Burnsville, 5.7% vacancy rate, so you'll see that's about 1,500 units. I want to make a distinction here between the number of housing units and the number of households that are occupied. So when we talk about the rental owner occupied number, it's just those that are occupied units, not vacant units, so there's a little distinction there to be made. We have the percentages up there, we're 66% owner occupied, 34% rental. This is census data, does not include group quarters, so in that 24,283 occupied units, they do not include about 443 people then that are in group quarters. That would be in a nursing home, or group home, or perhaps a memory care facility. So we're talking units and people, two different numbers, but I want to do, they only have 443, you may think that it's higher.
Councilmember Gustafson?
You say the census doesn't count that, or we as a city don't count that?
This is how the census counts it.
We as a city do count the group as rental, though?
Those we would not.
We do not?
No.
But I think that's part of our discussion.
No, that's what I'm just trying to get to.
Yeah, we would not count the nursing homes or group homes because we start with the census, so as we add permits that are issued, all of those, the nursing homes that we have certainly predate, would be included in the most recent census unless we issued a permit for something. And then the group homes, unless they have, well, we wouldn't even keep track of that either, because that would be a single-family home that we would assume to be owner occupied until the next census came around, and of course now they're counted as rental. So here's, how do we figure out the percentage that's senior of this number? What I did is started with the known senior rentals based on the CDA survey. So we know we have 952 units. These are not necessarily occupied or unoccupied, they're just the number of units that we have. I was able to deduce by the census blocks and tracks how many of the census numbers are in those senior multifamily developments that we know of, so we can kind of narrow it down. So there's 279 of the census rental that I know that are in senior developments. Then we factor in a vacancy rate, so we have, I would say, 635 senior rental units in the city. That does include Valley Ridge, I included that in our 952 because we know about that property. That is not in the census data yet, but certainly that's in our calculation because we know we have it.
And it's factored into the 635?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It does not include the Ebenezer project, that would be a group quarters by the census as that's a memory care, so that would not count in the census numbers for owner occupied or rental. So how does this figure out overall? If we know we have 24,283 units, we can deduce that 635 of them are senior-only rental, the non-seniors about 7,600, owner occupied 16051. So there you can see the percentages there. And then how do we compare to other cities in the county? The CDA's housing surveys every year is able to get some information from them. Now, this data set is, that's what I handed out, is different than the census numbers because the county has what they call assisted living, which includes units with any kind of assistance, and care, memory care, nursing home, and assisted living. Now, the census would count those as rental unless it was specifically a nursing home, memory care, or group quarters. So these numbers are going to be a little different data set. When you look at the spreadsheet that I handed out, Burnsville has the highest as far as the number of assisted units in the county, raw numbers, 321 units. However, when we compare this to like the per capita or percentage of a household, so how is it as a percentage of our housing stock? Hastings is the highest per capita, Inver Grove is second, and Apple Valley is third. So as proportioned to overall number of people in the county, we do not have a high, we're not at the high end of that at all. That's on the assisted side. When we look at independent senior units, we have the fourth highest in the county at 360 units. Once we add Valley Ridge, we'll be at the highest, because we'll be at 500 units. When you compare that to the population of independent senior units to overall households or per capita, you'll see West St. Paul is the highest, Inver Grove, and then Mendota So if you have any questions about the data that I was able to pull together before we have BJ get into his cost part, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, any questions on the data? I think the data is very telling, and so when I was reading through it, I think we'll have a very good discussion on how we're going to take a look at all of this. Craig?
Madam Mayor, I don't want to overgeneralize, but does this then indicate that, that there, at least based on this data, Jenny, that there's not a disproportionate amount if you proportionalize by the number of households or by the number, that we're not the leading or that we're not disproportionately loaded with senior housing? Is that a summary?
That's correct, Craig, when we compare it to ourselves and the population. The ones highlighted in yellow, the county average would be about 1%, one senior assisted unit for 1% at 1% of all the households. So for every, let's see, for every senior assisted, actually it's the other way around, for every household, 1% of the households, or one out of 100 households in that city or in the county would be an assisted. Same thing for independent. So the ones in yellow are the ones that are above the average or would rise to the top. The ones in green on the senior independent are the ones that are above the county figure of 1.8% or 1.8 per 100 households, that would be senior independent. So the ones in green are the ones that would, are in the top four or five that I picked out.
But I think we should, this is a good exercise for us to get our arms around this and put, and put some parameters around it, and we can lead the county on this, so, yeah.
One last, one last comment to Craig's question. So, the table I handed out compares each city to itself, a ratio of each city to housing stock. You can also look at this as overall how, how much of the share is a city providing in the county. So when you look at the numbers for assisted, if we have 321, we have the most, and there's 1,400 in the county, we have the highest number, or almost 20% of all the senior assisted units in the county are in Burnsville.
Yeah, when Rosemount has zero.
Correct, so you can...
And Farmington, zero.
We can compare us to ourselves based on population and households, but we can also compare us to other cities in the county. And same thing for senior independent. When we add Valley Ridge, we'll have 500 units, we'll be the first, that's about 20% of the total independent units in the county will be in Burnsville.
Thank you. Chief?
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm going to kind of just do an overview here of the data we've analyzed as far as the effects on EMS, the emergency medical services we provide to the community. And I just wanted to start just kind of with the last three-year number recap of where we're at. So for the past three years, '09, '10, and '11, we've gone 71 to 74% of our total call volume is EMS. So it's been pretty consistent, anywhere from 48 to, or 47 to 4,900 calls per year. Just wanted to do a quick recap, hopefully not to confuse you anymore with the definitions, but it's hard for us based on the, on the reporting system to the US Fire Administration with how they define things and with how the state defines things. So, where do we provide services? Obviously, at home, living independently, we pick up seniors, at home with home care, in senior living, independent living, in like a senior apartment complex, in senior living with home care, in assisted living facilities. And I want to make a differentiation here that I found out when doing some background information here, is that assisted living facilities are required to be registered with the state, they're not licensed, and if they're in a senior apartment complex and they get home care from an external home care service, they're not required to be registered at all, so there's no good way for us to track that. So, just like if they were in their home, there's no requirement for them to register with the state at all. So, there's a lot of assistance being provided, I believe, in some of our senior apartment buildings, and even in our regular apartment buildings, that we can't necessarily track. Skilled nursing care facility, obviously we have Ebenezer Ridge as the one licensed care facility in town, clinics, hospice, and obviously public places. So to give you kind of an idea of how many patients that, that means for us, 60 years and older, about 37 to 38% of our patients are 60 years or older. And one thing I wanted to bring up is if I took our average patient age in 2005 and then compared it to our '09, '10, and '11 statistics, the average patient age has increased by three years. So it's gone from 48 years old in 2005 to 51 years old. And I think that's a direct correlation with the paragraph I have below there from our state demographer, Tom Galops, I can't say his last name, Galosby. In the next decade, Minnesota will see as many people turn 65 as we've had in the past four decades combined, and that decade after will have even more. So clearly, we know that we have an aging population.
Dan?
Do you know the average age of the residents in Burnsville are? Has that been increasing as well?
The census, I saw it in the census, I think it was in the 40s?
I believe it was in the 40s.
Has that been going up about the same rate this has been going up?
Yes.
Okay.
So then I broke it down by those definitions. So the assisted living complexes in town, so if you take the assisted living, I took the three years of our past EMS calls, took the number of units that fell into that definition, and then figured out per unit, per year, call for service. So our assisted living, we're looking at .72 calls per unit, per year of EMS. Hospice is just, we only have one hospice in town, that's one. Senior apartments, about .11 calls per year, and then the skilled nursing facility, the one we have in town, is .95. So it gives you kind of a, an indication of, of our calls for service. Now, you'll, you'll see some fluctuation in there, I think, again, that has something to do with the type of care that's provided there, and I know even some of our senior apartment complexes are becoming assisted living complexes because they want to take over the care themselves. And that really fluctuates depending on the acuity of patients they take and the type of care they provide, and I think directly correlates with the adjustment for calls in each of those categories. To kind of give you a visual, this is kind of a heat map of the number of calls for patients 60 or over for 2009 to 2011, so you can kind of see where the concentrations are in town. Then just to kind of give you a quick idea of our pair mix a little bit, I think the biggest thing to point out here is we're seeing an increase in the government reimbursement, whether that's Medicare and Medicaid, and that's not specific to us in just EMS or fire-based EMS, it's healthcare in general is tending to see that. So, again, we've seen a 2% increase each year. Amazingly, with that increase, if you look at our collection rates, our collection rates have actually gone up consistently with our call volume. So, we're doing pretty good with, and it's staying pretty consistent with our call volume, what we're gaining as far as reimbursement goes. So, it looks bad if you just look at the gross collection rate, and that's like, that's if we build everything out and were to get 100% back, but we know we can't do that because of the federal regulations, we have to write a portion of the bill off.
How much is that now, that we write off?
On an average ambulance bill, it's about $1,000, just roughly. We bill an average of about $1,300 per patient, and Medicare and Medicaid pay about 340, 350, and the patient can pay about an $80, we can have the patient pay about an $80 copay. So, you know, $800 to $900 for sure we're, we have to write off before we can even collect on anything. Our revenue recapture and collections have been very helpful. We get about $75,000 to $80,000 per year out of revenue recapture and about $40,000 out of collections. So again, it's been pretty consistent with what our, with our, what our run volume is to bring in anywhere from $1.6 to $1.7 million. Any questions on the EMS-based stuff?
No, I think that's good information.
One other question, you gave us a, kind of a rate per household in the seniors. How does that compare with just the normal housing in Burnsville, our per-call rate? Do you have that, any idea on that?
Let's see, I'm trying to do that off the top of my head, I don't have it off the top of my head. I'm guessing it'd be about a .02, somewhere in there.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just rough math.
And he pulled out his calculator.
Craig's going to have the answer in a second.
The engineer is going to say, "Well, I'm going to pull up my calculator and make sure that the chief's numbers are correct."
That's funny.
Was he close?
We just, we just estimated.
I'd have to go back.
Okay. Jenny?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, then we've just posed some options to you as you consider the goal and the ends and outcomes based on the Fire Chief's information and the statistics I gave you, how we want to change this or not change it, or just how I, how I would report it to you in the ends and outcomes, just looking for any direction after your discussion on how you'd like to proceed.
Yeah, I think the first thing, council, if we can have a dialogue, because we have 70% owner occupied and 30% rental. And to go back to how we got to those numbers way back then, there were many factors that came into play to get to that number. And one was having to do with how we relate with the school district and the number of And also, the other is how we look at the housing stock in its relationship to our businesses and workers. What do we have in terms of that balance? So there were quite a few factors that we brought into play during those deliberations back then. And so, things have changed because of the economy, but what I think we need to take a look at, what is good for Burnsville continuing to move forward? Is 70/30 still good, but we have to do something with that senior, because senior housing has added to that in bringing the senior housing, the rental part, even though it's only two, what was it, 2. something?
2.6.
2.6. But still, 2.6 adds to that rental number and brings it down. So, I think the first question is, do you still like 70/30? And then we can talk about how we deal with the senior.
I think we should take a look at maybe changing it because of the economy. Be quite frankly, if we stay at 70/30, we shouldn't be approving any more rental housing period, whether it's senior or anything else.
Well, I'm saying...
The way it's set up today.
I say if we do that, we just pull the senior part out, because the senior part should be looked at differently, but then we have to ask ourselves, what is the right number or the right percentage in senior housing? Because we don't want to continue to scale that when you look at these numbers and what that cost is going to be long-term. So we have to be sustainable moving forward. Mary?
Well, when that 70/30 number was, was, that spread was arrived at, the economy was not the way it is today. I don't think that this, what we're seeing now is being driven by the economy as much as people who are aging in place, like me. I mean, I'm still in a four-bedroom house and where I raised three children. There, that my, practically my whole street is like that. So, so I think that to, to make, to make this an argument on the economy is not the right one.
I agree.
I think that, that what we have to do is talk about single-family versus multifamily or rental. That's that, I mean, just that. I think the 70/30 seems to be a good number. I mean, I, I don't know, unless you wanted to reduce it to 82, we may get 820, I don't, I don't know why we'd want to play with the 70/30 number.
Okay.
Is there enough space in the city to build single-family homes to hit that 70/30?
Well, but see, we look at some of the condos, those are occupied, so anything that you put in, because in Jenny's background, she pulled out Gramercy and Meadowwood Village and all of those, those are all owner occupied, but they're senior housing. So that did not go into her count, which is, it moves into the, so, but also, think about what's going to happen as we look at the Minnesota River Quadrant, because there's some areas there that's going to have mixed use.
In 30 years?
In 30 years, but, you know, but still, we're looking at all of that. Yeah, Dan?
Well, I, if I were at home, if I were senior watching at home right now, I'd have to wonder, and I want to make this clarification, that, why we're having this discussion. It's, for these seniors living in Burnsville, we're not having this discussion to figure out a way to raise taxes.
No, we're trying to reduce, yeah.
We're, we're doing this to study what our ratios are, and I believe Councilmember Gustafson brought this up, to be able to extract out what the senior apartment housing is
Yeah.
as a percentage of the total, to isolate the general population apartment numbers, what they really are. So we then have some solid numbers to say, is this where we want to be? Can we adjust it? We just recently approved, you know, a senior multi-housing or, you know, multi-living proposal, and we're probably going to get more. We might get more in the River Quadrant in the future. And if that's the case, do we have any room to move? Or is the intent to create headroom to move if we agree that there's needed to be some headroom and shifting? Or we leave everything the same and just take it as is, as it comes to us?
Well, as you know, I would like to see some headroom to move, but my concern was, how we count it today, we count these as part of our rental
Yeah.
in our, in our equations, that's the way it's counted. So when we built, when we approved the senior housing, we were already kind of violating our policy to go above the 70/30, because we are already 30-some percent rental in the city, and by approving more rentals, we're already in violation of our policy, which we're allowed to do. And so, do we need to look at that and say, okay, then we're not going to count the senior part of it, we'll just count the other part, and then this is, it's a separate issue for us. And if that's what we're going to do, then that's what we're going to do, but let's...
And that's the reason why...
I mean, how do you, how do you tell developer, well, you can build all the senior housing you want, but you can't build a regular luxury apartment building?
Yeah.
How do you do that?
And that's the reason why I wanted to have this at a work session, so that we can talk about pulling senior housing aside, out of the rental, the regular multi-housing rental units, so that we can have a handle on that and understand what the, how much senior housing we have. Because there were two things that I was concerned about. One is that the cost to us in terms of service, and how do we sustain that long-term? When we have how many senior housing, and we try to put our arms around that, because at the end of the day, what that happens, when we don't, when we're writing off $1,000 per call, that comes off the property tax. And so, what we have to do is get our arms around that. Mary?
Uh...
Did you want to count senior housing within the rental?
Well, this is what, this is where, what I was thinking. I mean, in the way I think, and usually by 6:30 at night, I'm thinking very simplistically, and that is, rental is rental. Rental is rental. And, and we're maxed out with our rental. And yes, we did approve a couple of, well, the one, the one at, in the, the most recent one...
Ebenezer's.
Ebenezer, that was apparently already on the books as already planned. We did Valley Ridge. Valley Ridge, I think that we approved that because there were certain benefits to having that property developed that way. And I think that council can do that. We can, as you said, we can violate our policy for a particular goal, but I would be very reluctant, bless you, to, to keep doing that, because I think that we're, it's, we're, and whether it's for senior or anything else. Because as we, when we had this discussion the last time, I said I don't, I'm very concerned about reaching the tipping point in a, in a community, which you can have when you have either, you know, there are some communities that have no rental at all. None. There are some suburban communities that have that. We don't want to be that kind of community, but I don't think we want to be a community that's dominated by rental either, and I don't want to see that tipping point reached. So I'm comfortable with the 70/30, but...
And, and lock the seniors into that?
Yeah, because, you know what, those buildings look to me like apartments. If it, you know, if it looks like an apartment and it quacks like an apartment, it's an apartment. You know?
Okay. Dan?
Well, I, I don't disagree with Councilmember Sherry. I mean, I, I think we've, I just want to say that from a general standpoint, we believe, we all believe, and we voiced it many times, that we have enough apartments.
Yes.
This discussion came up because of a luxury apartment that Dan had brought forward, an idea. And I think, I certainly believe that there's a difference in senior housing versus general population apartments. But what we all are, what we're, the only thing we're focusing on tonight, it seems, is the cost side of it. There's a revenue side of this that we haven't talked about. When we, that Valley Ridge property, and I suppose Heather may know this, what is the revenue, the tax increase?
501(c)(3).
Zero then, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
A lot of these, no, they're, it's, it's lower.
There's some pilot there and some other things as well. Is that true, Jen?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, on the Valley Ridge project, it is owned by the CDA, however, they have a long-term lease with Presbyterian Homes for half of that. The CDA gives the city some payment and lieu taxes for their units, and it's also my understanding that the Presbyterian Homes piece will be responsible for property taxes. That part is not, not exempt.
Not exempt. Okay, so, in general terms, with migrating that property from an aging strip center to the development that's going to happen, what is going to be, your best guess, the net impact on the tax revenue to the city from what it was to what it's going going to be? Any idea?
Yeah, members of the council, I don't have those numbers. I believe the greatest benefit will come to the city when the commercial mixed-use piece is put on.
Yeah.
So then I want to, I want to carry that conversation forward to Dan's idea. If somebody came to us with a very high-end luxury apartment project, and it was going on property that's currently vacant, where it's, we're collecting taxes on a vacant property, and it, this luxury apartment complex was done very nicely, what would the revenue stream be for something like that to the city versus any other development here?
I don't know. But until we get to even really looking into that, I want to look at what is the number? And there's, I think-
Well, actually, Madam Mayor, I don't think the number matters because we've already proven that we can go over 30.
Well, no.
It ma, it matters because it's a guide, but we, it's what's our tolerance to get further into the 30s?
Because one of the things that we do know is that you can call something luxury today, and in two years, it will not be luxury because it gets to the point of businesses wanting to make sure that their units are rented so they can pay their mortgage. So you can come into us and sell it. I was in the industry, and sell what you want to sell, and you pick up your money and you leave, and we are going to be saddled with the problems. So, you know, to even get to that discussion, I just say 70-30 is, is what we can, can, can handle. But people can come in and tell us, this is going to be a luxury apartment. And I can tell you, in two or three years, when they want to sell those units and rent those units so they can pay their mortgage, they're going to reduce the rate.
So you're saying if they went from apartments to sold townhomes or owner-occupied, that would be a bad thing?
If they went from what, from-
Well, you said, if it was a luxury apartments, and then you said they take their money and run, and then they sell them as owner-occupied units, that would be a bad thing?
No, no.
It seems like it could be the other way around, it would be a good thing.
Well, I don't know if they'll do that. I, they'll just, they'll come in and sell it to us as high-end. But they can take that and sell it to someone else. They've flipped buildings and, and sell their, their financing to someone else and get a lower financing so that they can rent it at, at a lower rate.
Then somebody gets a deal on the luxury.
Sure. Yeah. Mary?
Well, I, I, I agree with you on that. And, because I've seen it happen. And, but I, I still go back to this idea of what, what kind of character, what's the character of the community that you want? Do you want it predominantly rental, whether it be luxury or middle or low?
Yeah.
Or do you want it predominantly, and I think that's the best we can say right now, we will reassign numbers to it? Do you want it predominantly on your owner-occupied? I, I think that, that that's where we really have to, that's the question.
Well, I think, just to follow, I, I'm not advocating more apartments. I think what, one of the points that Dan brought up is, looking at our current inventory, we wish that we had some higher-end luxury apartments that would attract a higher-
There's some vacancies at Provence.
That would attract a higher-end luxury apartment income to be able to, and, and thus that is a consumer or resident who would probably have a higher spendable, you know, living style with more expendable income and would bring, you know, prosperity, would bring spending, and would bring et cetera, et cetera. So it's just, I think, looking at the mix of what we have, we wish we had more of what we have in some spots, in, in a higher end, to attract essentially an owner-occupy type of client who doesn't want to own. In other words, they can afford to own, but they want to rent, and they want to rent something really, really nice. That's, I think, echoing what Dan was getting at. You know, maybe too late for us. We may not be able to get to that.
And the thing is, there is inventory in that high-end. Provence has, would like to see their units rented out, and that's high-end.
Yeah.
There is, there is available inventory.
So, you know, maybe, sorry.
I just said, but not in the heart of the city.
Well-
We have, we have voucher housing, we have affordable housing, and we have market housing in the heart of the city. But we do not have high-end rental in the heart of the city, which is our downtown area. So yes, you can live out on 42 behind LA Fitness, or you can be down next to the Performing Arts Center with all the amenities we have in this area. And that's all I'm saying.
Well.
And, and Councilmember Sherry said it earlier, we made a special thing for the people over at Presbyterian. It was a nice mix. It made sense for us to do it. We, we broke our policy to do it. If something nice comes in, I think we should at least look at it. Right now, under our policy, we won't even look at it. So we've closed the door before we can even see if someone has something for us to see.
I want to just follow up with that one more point, if I may. I, and I, this is, I've, I've thought a lot about this, and I, I just want to state again, I am not in favor of increasing the number. I'm not a, let's, let's open the doors and bring more apartments in. This is a very specific niche, unique product that Dan is talking about. And I, the other angle I wanted to bring out is, where is a, and I'll, I'll use Mary, if I may, Councilmember Sherry?
That's what my friends call me.
Mary. You know, there's just something about Mary, and I can't put my finger on it. What is, you know, what are the options if you want to get out of your four-bedroom home, and you want to move into-
With my kids? No.
And you want to move in with your grandkids or kids?
No.
If you don't want to own again, another-
Right. Which I wouldn't.
Is there, right, is there a rental option in Burnsville's offering today that you, that would be attractive for you to go from a four-bedroom home into a rental that was of a quality level that you're looking for? And so that's kind of, the other thing is, this, this, this kind of product could in fact help turn over our homes to make the Councilmember Sherry's home available to another family coming in with kids that needs four bedrooms, where she doesn't, since the grandkids are traveling all around the country. And so it's, it does fit nicely as a next step for those who don't want to own, who are at the point where they're retired, they're enjoying life, having fun, running around the country, taking vacations, serving on the council in between vacations. But there's no place, you know, we, we don't have anything necessarily, not a lot, to offer them to go to. So it does fill a niche need, I believe. Whether the markets are, I don't know. We don't know that. We're just trying to have this discussion to set ourself up for, if this comes to us, what are we going to do? Are we going to just shut the door right away? Are we going to take a look at it? Because there's other factors involved in what that kind of product might bring to the city. In a very unique and probably a one-option type of thing, not, am I going on that long? Is this the-
I think that's what I'm saying.
They're pressing the button.
I think-
You got a button that you're telling the control, here, hit the static button, Keely's talking.
Yeah. No, Mary?
Well, I, I-
Let's try and wrap this up because we've got the chief who has to go to another-
I believe you're, you're right. There is, that niche is not there, but it's too late. I mean, I think that if, if one of the present aging apartment owners, and I mean, I can think of some that, that are actually fully occupied, but if they wanted to take their property and raise that rather than renovate, and, and turn it over to, you know, rebuild, because they'd be zoned for that, rebuild a luxury building. And I think, you know what? I think that, that some of those, those apartment owners would be wise to do that.
Yeah.
And the opportunities are there. Looking down the line, you know, I, we talked about the MRQ in 30 years. Is it you? It's, no. And that is, I don't want to make this decision for what might happen down there because that's like a different world there. And that's-
Moving your microphone seems to-
But anyway, you know, I, I don't think, I don't want to close that off, which I don't think we're doing right now. But I'm still very concerned about the balance.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about the balance. And, and I think that we made the decision for Valley Ridge because that was a pit down there. It really was. It was a pit.
It addressed another part of our goal, and that's the aging strip center.
Yeah. And we're still getting tax benefit because when that commercial area is developed, plus I think that's going to spur some improvement in that other commercial area down in that little triangle down there. So I'm not willing to, I'm just not willing to move on it.
Okay. So what would you like, because if not, we can, to give staff direction, what I'm hearing is that leave the, the goals the same at 70-30, and we'll continue to move at that. Is that what you two are saying?
Well, we're, we're over that, and we're, that's what our goal is, and we're already exceeding it. So I think if, through this discussion, if, if someone were to come to us, someone were to come to city council with a very, very, very high-end luxury apartment, I don't think the door should be closed on them. I think we should have that application in front of us to talk about as a council.
At least at a work session.
Yeah, at a work-
But we did have somebody come, at least somebody approached me about six months ago.
And someone approached me too?
How high-end was it?
I don't know. Just said it was high-end.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything come through a work session where a developer comes in and says, this is what we're proposing to do.
No.
I have not seen anything like that.
But on the other hand-
Park Avenue?
Jenny, can I ask you a question? If I'm a developer and I call you and say, I want to make a, build a luxury apartment building downtown Burnsville, what is the response?
I mean, certainly we tell any developer what the council's desires and goals are, and that we have this goal of 70-30, that it would be a challenge. Certainly, we offer that they could come to work session, but we're very skeptical because we know the position, as we've talked to the council over the years, of, of where you are as a group.
So we do somewhat dissuade them from moving forward with it.
I think that's a good summary. We would never tell anyone.
No, I, I know we don't, I know we say you can't, but I think we probably dissuade them.
Tell them what the challenge is.
Would it, would it, do you think it would change their attitude if you said, you know, this is the policy, but the council does look at exceptions, and if you want to come forward, we'll be happy to bring you to a work session?
And, but let me-
What would that do?
Now, let me, then we have to have a discussion what that exception is.
Agreed. I'm with you.
You know, I am not going to just open the floodgates, and, and then I will say, let's not have that direction until Councilmember Coughlin, Bill, is here. Because he also has some opinions about that. But then, then the parameters of what those exceptions are, because I don't want to open that floodgate and everyone-
I prefer to make this decision with the entire council here anyways.
Yeah. So, but I think we all agree, we'll just leave it at 70-30. And then if we're going to look at exceptions, I'd like that to be at another work session where the full complement of the council is present.
I just, I think you're winding it up, correct?
I'd like to wind it up because we've also got the EDC here.
Right. And I just, I wanted, I want to thank Chief Jungman for, and Jenny, but Chief Jungman especially for bringing out this information about the, the fire slash EMS calls. I think that, that's very, very useful for, I think we see these numbers all the time, but it's very useful for the public to, to understand the, why we're, some of our concern here. Plus the, the, the numbers and the costs. Thanks a lot.
And, and thank you. Because, you know, when we go through all of this and we look at the fees and the charges, they're all there, and we see them, and it's, and it's published. But I don't think our citizens really take a look at those numbers and say, oh, I didn't realize that. But for us, when we're looking at all those fees and charges, and we have this discussion during budget times, you know, they probably don't key into it. Craig?
Madam Mayor, trying to sift through and try to take some direction for staff, I, I'm going to take a shot at it. It seems that council-
We're keeping it at 70-30.
Yeah, council is, is inclined to be at seven, at 70-30, but potentially would evaluate some exceptions if we could offer some examples of what the exceptions might be that could be considered. Would staff, would you want staff to return to you again at another work session when, when there's a full complement of the council with some articulated of what some possible exceptions could be?
Yeah. And what is luxury?
Yes. I, I think that's a good point.
What is the definition of luxury?
It doesn't mean hardwood versus linoleum. It's, it's, it's the whole package. It's the location, it's the ceiling heights, it's the quality, the, it's, and I, my perception of this is really high-end luxury. Not a slight upgrade over, you know, a deluxe, you know, nice, very nice apartment, but something that is, and, and I envision it being something with, you know, more, you know, views, and the location is, is part of this. So anyway, if, and that, so I guess my, I just want to clarify, my threshold is pretty high. I don't know what Dan's is, but mine's pretty high.
Well, I, I think if, I could just look at Park Place where you live, Madam Mayor. If it's as nice as that, and it's a rental, that's a luxury building.
Oh, I think if it's going to be rental-
You want it to be even more luxurious than the luxury building you're in?
Well, and it's going to have impacts on a lot of different factors. I'm looking at the school district.
We got to watch about hi-ha of the body.
Well, I'm going to also look at how all of these rental units in this city is going to have an impact on our school district.
I'm not sure anything built in the heart of the city is going to impact our school district in any way whatsoever anyways.
Well, I, I think, before we even go down that road, I want to understand what, what those parameters are. Craig?
I'm still trying to catch our staff direction. Then I'm starting to hear that that maybe is the only niche that council will consider for this, is that it would be luxury, and then perhaps we could return with some ways to define luxury?
Define luxury. I, but I also have-
Luxury in the eye of the beholder.
Well, I think we try to, we try to come up with some objective-
You can set that bar pretty high, that would be impossible on me too.
And the other, and the other is that, you know, I think Councilmember Coughlin had some, some legal parameters during our all-day work session, and he had offered that up. But maybe when he returns, you can talk with him about that and see how, how that fits in.
Legal?
On, on, on definitions, when, if you remember when you talk about luxury.
Yeah, he did. I re, I recall he said something.
So I, I'd like to make sure that, that he's well aware of what this discussion is, and then if he has any input into that. Because he had some, some thoughts.
But I don't believe we have, well, you mentioned some, and you mentioned some, but minus a, a project knocking on our door, we can take our time in doing what Mr. Evelyn is saying is-
I want to bring it back.
For to take some time to have a discussion on what that threshold might be, what the interpretation is, so we're all on the same page, and then be able to take some action after that.
Craig?
Madam Mayor, I think we do have time as it relates to this potential niche that you're trying to kind of craft. But if, if we, if we are understanding correctly that senior housing does not fit as an exception, does not fit as a niche, that would be helpful for us to know because we do get many inquiries about, about senior housing. And we could have lots of senior housing applications that could come in within the next year or two.
Yeah. And I think that's to Councilmember Sherry's point. If it's at, if we've exceeded, then I think that's where it is. That's what I understand.
Yeah. If we're, if we're at the 70-30 right now, then 70-30 it is.
And the only reason why we had made the exception for Ebenezer's because it was on, it was on their PUD concept from the very beginning in terms of what they were going to be doing. But otherwise, and we had approved a concept plan back whenever.
I'm okay with that position.
Okay.
We're going to try to come back then, reschedule when the full complement of the council is here. We're going to explore Councilmember Coughlin's legal questions on this, and then take a shot as best we can at, at making some objective definition of what might constitute a luxury proposal that you could consider.
Yeah. That's, that's it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Jenny and Chief, thank you very much. Great information. This also, Jenny, was very interesting to take a look at the per capita income from the assisted to the independent. Was also interesting to see how many memory care units we have. And I know in that industry, it turns pretty quickly also. But then you look at some of the demographics, a, a lot of us, and I'm saying a lot of us because I'm now in that category and can speak to that, are living much longer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and thank you, Chief. I hope we've given you enough time to travel. Drive safely.
Thank you.
The next is a very exciting item for us to review. And this is to review the draft Burnsville Business Growth Loan Guarantee Policy. And Skip Neenhaus, our Economic Development Coordinator and our Community Development Director, Jenny Faulkner, is presenting. Who's heading up- Who's heading up?
Us.
I get to do the presentation, my boss gets to answer all the tough questions.
Pretty much normal.
Yeah, pretty much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Little history on this item. The Economic Development Commission has spent their last four meetings discussing business incentives. And basically what we did is we, we started with a very large funnel and we presented them with all different types of business incentives that could be used to both attract and retain businesses. And over those four meetings, they have narrowed it down to the policy that is, that is being presented to you tonight for some, some direction and some discussion. They have given us, throughout that process, they gave us parameters and we kept coming back with examples of those parameters. The draft policy that is in front of you tonight, the EDC did recommend that council and EDA adopt that policy and we will go through it for you relatively quickly. The parameters that we finally settled on is that the policy would be available to all business sectors except retail. We would have special emphasis on our STEM-based businesses to acknowledge the initiative that we have before us. We would utilize a percentage increase for businesses versus assigning an arbitrary number that they had to have to qualify for expansion. EDC correctly pointed out that we needed a definition of STEM, so everybody really understood what we were talking about, and a definition of retail, so that we all understand what we're talking about. And then they did ask us to do a, kind of a final go-round on some solicitation from bankers and the business community as, are we on the right path? The objectives of the policy that's before you are to attract new business, help our existing businesses expand, help our existing businesses improve or renovate their properties, help our existing businesses purchase equipment, and again, special emphasis on those STEM-based businesses. The loan guarantee would be structured such that the policy would allow us to guarantee up to 50% of a business loan not to exceed $20,000 on our part. So if a business was seeking a $100,000 loan, the most that the EDA would be asked to guarantee is 20,000 of that. So our, our stopgap point is 20,000. We would do that guarantee for a five-year period of time. We would require that the applicant have documentation showing that this guarantee is necessary for them to secure this loan and there would be a non-refundable application fee to go through the process of reviewing that loan.
Councilmember Gustafson-
Skip, when you look at the 20,000 for up to five years, as they're paying down the loan at the bank, when they pay down the, the first 20,000, if they'd paid down earlier, would that come off quicker so the money's not encumbered and it can be reused to, for another loan?
Um-
Or is it, we're just going to guarantee it for five years and-
Councilmember Gustafson, that discussion actually did not take place at the EDC, if that's-
Because that was my question, and how would we get our money back?
They'll unencumber the money and then that money becomes available to help yet another company as they come in.
The way the policy is currently drafted, if, if you gave a loan guarantee of 20,000 against a loan, that 20,000 would be encumbered for that five years it's pledged against that loan. If, if council desires to have the policy structured differently so that as, as they pay off, your amount of guarantee comes down, we can structure the policy.
I think it'd be worth looking at if we talk to the banks and see how that affects their decision-making as well as far as giving the larger part of the loan to these, to these customers or businesses.
Yeah, Jenny, because that was my question. I want to make sure that, that, that pool that we have continues to be substantial so that we can, we have a revolving pool that we could use to help other businesses, but it, Jenny?
I would, we can bring that information back. This has to be formally adopted by the EDA and city council, so we can provide the, if we can do that, we certainly can put that in there. If we can, after, or after we talk to the banks, we'll give you that information in the background when we bring this back.
And that's one of the questions that I have, because as looking through the policy, I didn't see how we are going to get paid back.
Well, we're just incumbent, we don't get-
We're not getting back.
No, we're, I know, we're not loaning money, we're just guaranteeing.
Yes.
We're just guaranteeing.
Unencumbered.
I want to unencumber the funds, that's what I meant, yes. Craig?
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm interpreting Councilmember Gustafson's assertion there and then to be that maybe we would proportionally, as the principal on the loan goes down, we would proportionally reduce our guarantee of that.
Yeah.
That makes very much sense.
Yeah, and, and that's good, because that's what I would like to see happen, because I want to make sure that we have enough funds to guarantee, yeah.
In your discussions, or have you, you did have some bankers involved in this process?
Yeah, yeah. They did, and staff also talked to, went out and talked to bankers.
Yeah.
The discussions with the bankers was at the staff level only, Councilmember Keely.
Okay. Then essentially what we're doing with that, and I, I agree with it, I would rather us encumber the first up to 20,000 of their buy-down of their loan. So we, because we, I know we're subordinated, I'm sure, in these instances, so it might be difficult to ask for, to be in the first position for payoff encumbrment. Might be a little difficult, but to get something more favorable to unencumber those funds quicker to then make them available as, you know, in a, I don't know the size of the loan overall, 20,000 could be very small compared to a $200,000 loan, it'd be 10%, but some, some sort of scale to get our funds unencumbered so it can make them available for other people.
We're always going to have to be subordinate, or else we don't really do them any good. We're going to have to be subordinate, but we could be proportionally subordinate.
Yes.
Still, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, Skip, go ahead.
The criteria that is in your draft policy is that if you are a new business coming to Burnsville, you will need to have at least 10 employees to qualify for the loan. If you're a STEM-based business, you would need five. If you are one of our existing businesses that is looking for a loan that we would guarantee to expand, you would need a 10% employee increase or one, whichever's greater. If you're a STEM, it's 5% or one. If you're one of our existing businesses and you're renovating, you're improving or you're purchasing equipment, we are saying that you will need a minimum of five employees to qualify. Again, if you're a STEM business, you would need three. Documentation that you have the need and documentation that you have the ability to secure the loan. Again, retail and restaurants would not be eligible and the business would have to be registered with the state of Minnesota. The eligible cost in the policy that's before you as a proposal is moving costs for a business to move to a Burnsville location, build-out cost, expansion cost, renovation or improvement cost, and equipment purchase. Those would be the types of things. Madam Mayor, please.
Mary?
Would that include moving within Burnsville, a Burnsville business moving to another location in Burnsville?
As the policy is currently drafted, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
The policy also calls for the creation of a loan guarantee account. That, the funds from that account could come from either the EDA fund balance, they could come from proceeds of future land sales, or they could come from a levy increase. Staff is recommending that we start the loan guarantee account with $100,000 from the EDA fund balance. And then as we need to replenish our increase, we could look at any of the other options if, if council is comfortable with that recommendation. I'm sorry, Madam-
No, go ahead, I'm just-
We did go and get some outside input. We talked to three of our community banks. All of them told us that a, a policy such as this would be beneficial. We also talked to the SBA Assistant Director who informed us that he believed that a policy such as this would be beneficial. I think we have all heard, you know, over the last year or so, that from the business community, that access to capital is, is getting harder and it is our belief that this, this could be the tipping point and that's what our local bankers and the SBA has told us, this could be the tipping point for some of those loans actually occurring. The discussion and the direction we're looking for is, are you comfortable with the policy and us bringing it back to you with the one exception that we've already noted? Do you have additional, you know, modifications you'd like to see come back to you? Or now that you've looked at it, would you prefer to just say, "No, let's not do anything at this point in time"? We'd certainly stand for questions while you have your discussion.
Mary?
I have a whole bunch of questions.
Yes, please.
Can I just fire away?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much for working, thanks, you Economic Development Commission for your, your work and you anticipated a lot of the questions that I would have had, so I'm not going to have to ask them. But I do have a few that either escaped me in your, your meeting or just, I didn't think of them, or I can't, I thought of them later. Will we require any additional criteria above and beyond what the banks are requiring for qualifying these, these loans?
Councilmember, we are basically relying on the bank to do the due diligence.
Okay, that was my understanding, I just wanted to be sure.
And it's in, it's in the policy also that we require them to, to give us the documentation.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, I saw that. But I just didn't know if there was going to be any additional. So, the next thing, and I think Mr. Slipska asked this at their meeting, and that is, what other communities do this? Any others? I know, and Jenny had said there weren't any in our market, in our, our market that are doing it, but are, do you know of other communities elsewhere that, that might be doing it?
Members of the council, if I can. We know that the city of Minneapolis has a similar program and so we modeled our application off of that. As far as our other market cities, we don't really consider them a market city. When we first started to do our research on this, we didn't find any. There is a group, MCCD-
Yeah.
-that's just getting started and they do something similar to this if you're participating city. And we're currently working with the CDA on how we can get that, it's additional tool, it's not quite like this. It's more for small, small loans, I would say, as opposed to a guarantee. And how we can get, get that tool in our toolbox too. But as far as this guarantee goes, the only other one we know in our region is Minneapolis.
Okay.
And if I could, Councilmember Sherry, when we talk with businesses, especially on an attraction standpoint, we're, they're not looking at us versus Plymouth. They're looking primarily, they want to probably be south of the river.
Eagan or Appleton.
Occasionally, it might be us versus Bloomington. So the market-city comparison is, is a little smaller than we typically would do when we, when we do other types of ordinance changes and things like that.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, that makes sense.
I'm going to go to Heather to answer part of your question.
Oh, yeah, okay, I've got two more then after, go ahead.
No, Jenny answered.
Oh, okay, on the question then.
Yeah. Then, is there a time limit on this, this program? I didn't see anything in there and I, I raise this question because right now we're doing this because capital is so tight, it's so difficult to get loans.
Access to capital is, is very difficult.
It has not always been like that and it's not always going to be that way. I hate to put a program, yes, I know. You won't, but, but I, I hate to establish a government program that then never goes away. I would like to see some kind of time limit on this or that we would review it. I would like that written into this policy if we do it. I would like to see that this is reviewed within, say, five years.
Yeah, Jenny?
I would suggest, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you will look at the funding for this when you do the budget every year. It's a line, it'll be a line item in the EDA budget, so if at that time-
It talks annually then.
It talks that we review it annually.
Then it's built in, okay, that takes care of that. Then, I, in fact, I think that was something Craig Regeverson brought up, if I'm not mistaken. But the last thing is, a question that I didn't hear discussed or answered in the meeting, and that is, what about home-based businesses? One of the things would be, and I think home-based businesses were included in this, correct?
Um, under the, under the way the policy is drafted, Councilmember Sherry, a home-based business would not be able to qualify because of the employees.
Yeah, they need employees, 10 or five.
They would not have enough employees to qualify.
Okay, okay, all right.
If you changed your home-based business ordinance to allow them to have multiple employees-
They can't have that.
No, 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 they cannot have a-
When they recognize a marketplace-
Got it.
That would change our parking policies as well.
Yeah, I know.
No, we can't go there, Mary. No, 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 no.
No, no, and I, in fact, I was, I wanted to discourage it for all the reasons that I won't go into right here. But I, I wanted to be sure we were not including home-based businesses, thank you.
We have, we have issues in other kinds of businesses that we have no control over that, so let's not go down that road.
Yeah.
Okay, Dan?
I have a few. I, I have to open by saying, this is a difficult decision to consider, because in a way, it may or may not go against a person's philosophy that city should not be getting involved in taxpayer or private sector funding. And I'm sure this was a difficult debate at the table. And because we're putting taxpayer money at risk, even though we're not putting a loan out there, we're essentially-
Setting it aside.
We're setting it aside and we're, we're playing the role of the SBA and saying, "Bank, give that loan because we'll back you for X dollars." So it's, it's, it's a sign of the times as much as anything and it, this is, this one, I've been in favor of it all along because I wanted to figure out a way how Burnsville can help attract businesses. I mean, that's really the bottom line. And it's like, okay, what can we do that might be cutting edge that may not be done elsewhere other than Minneapolis, who seems to pioneer a lot of things, good or bad? And just, you know, what can we do but not to put taxpayer money at risk? So one of the bullets said, you know, a levy increase. That was the first thing that caused me to, you know, to really shake uncontroll, you know, shake a little bit. We can't do that. So much like the PAC Angel Fund, where we are putting money, we are encumbering money. With the PAC program, that program has the ability to, it has risk to lose, but it also has the ability to gain. This program only has a downside, because we're encumbering it and if a business fails, we would have to pay. There isn't an upside, so we're not sharing any upside with the bank, we're only sharing in the risk. So this is a little bit different animal to think about. I'm curious, do the loans that would come from us or to us under this program, are they going to be SBA-backed or maybe they will, maybe they won't, doesn't matter? Okay, so it's possible that they may not qualify for SBA for whatever the reason, but they still, the bank is still interested in doing a loan and they would come to us. So we might be a stopgap for non-SBA bank loans.
I think, Councilmember Keely, what we are going to be is, we are going to be the linchpin for the relatively solid business who four years ago would have gotten a loan and paid it back with no problem, who now, under tighter underwriting criteria, cannot get a loan. I don't see us, with this level of guarantee, I don't see this swaying a bank to make a loan to a business that's very questionable if they'd be able to pay it back.
These are going to be lower risk, just barely outside their tolerance that this gives them a little more comfort.
Yeah. Craig has-
Did you want, yes?
Well, just want to supplement something that Councilmember Keely said. I don't even think it's necessarily beyond their tolerance, but in some of the bankers that I talked to about this program, it's their regulatory people.
Yeah.
Bankers are struggling, being pulled both directions right now with people who want them to do more commercial lending from the government and then one of the other arms of government saying, "But you can't do that because we have tighter standards."
Yeah.
So this would help them to get over that issue.
Yes, and it, and it does, having had many SBA-backed and non-SBA-backed loans with banks, they really like diversification. And so, where a bank might offer a business who's after a loan, some of it might be term-backed SBA, some of it might be a line of credit, and some of it might be another, a private source, where it's the total package to get to the number that the business needs. And that's, that's just the norm. So this, this gives them another tool to help support one or another of those to get the loan done, which is great. My, one of my comments were, who's going to do the, the EDC will review and make recommendations to the city on the request, so what due diligence or underwriting process have you thought about from the EDC standpoint to make that recommendation?
To us.
And might it, might it be similar to a due diligence as a private angel fund, which we have one, I know that's in the, in the area that somebody may or may not be a part of, or at least there was one.
Yeah, there is.
And really, maybe it's, you know, model, modeling your due diligence after that as opposed, and possibly even what the SBA does as far as deciding as a group, do we like this deal or not and do we recommend it?
And I'm going to go to Skip, he has an answer to that. Skip?
Councilmember Keely, if I could, again, as a reminder- Councilmember Keely, if I could, again, as a reminder, we are using the lending institution as our primary due diligence driver. So, the things that the EDC would look at are the loans that after the bank or the lending institution has done their due diligence, they have said, this one, as Mr. Ebling has pointed out, we would like to make the loan, but our regulatory issues are going to struggle, we're going to struggle with it, but with this guarantee backing, we can then get around the regulatory issue. Not that different from the analysis that we would ask our financial analysis consultant to do, for example, on a TIF contract prior to bringing it to EDC and EDA.
Gotcha, thank you. One last comment.
I'm going to go to Craig, because this, your question about all of that was have all the...
Well, I wanted to supplement what Councilmember Keely and Mr. Neenhouse were talking about. I think that it was clear early on that we are not bankers.
We are not.
We don't know anything about bankers.
We are not.
And even the esteemed members of the EDC said, they are not bankers. That's why the idea for a partial loan guarantee makes sure that we're going to be asked to consider a loan guarantee that the bank has already got an 80% claim on. So, they're not going to bring us anything that hasn't been fairly well underwritten, and they've done their due diligence on it. So, we can have some confidence in the fact that this has been pretty thoroughly vetted before it ever comes to us.
Sure.
I'm going to go, one more to, he's going to finish, Dan Keely's going to finish, and then come to Dan Gustafson.
I didn't say like Councilmember Sherry did, that I had a laundry list and just shoot. I just want one last one. On the fees, city shall require an application fee of 1% of the guarantee amount to investigate feasibility providing a loan to the applicant. That's pretty favorable compared to the SBA's fees of, I think, 3.5%. 3.5% to 4%, they smack the hard. But I do think, I don't know how, what these, you know, ultimately are going to be, but I think I would feel more comfortable putting a floor on that of a minimum of 100, rather than what would be a $50 fee on a $5,000 loan, is just put a minimum of 100 or 1%, which would be anywhere between $100 and $200. I still think that's very fair, actually, and very feasible. Thank you.
Craig, you just said that the banks won't bring us things they've done their diligence on. Are the banks the one that's going to present this to us, or is it the companies themselves are going to come to us, or are they going to come together?
Councilmember Gustafson, it's my understanding from Mr. Neenhouse and the document that I've seen from the EDC, that they will need to present to us, the applicant will need to present to us some showing from the bank, and I really like the phrase that they use, a showing from the bank that says that this loan guarantee is necessary and sufficient for them to make the loan. So, they'll have to bring some sort of showing from the bank, that the bank will, that number one says, if you do this guarantee, we will do this guarantee, and if you don't do this guarantee, we won't do the loan. So, I mean, it really ties it in from two directions. Thank you.
So, Councilmember Keely, you opened your remarks with, this is very difficult, but is this something you would be supportive of?
Yes, with a qualifier, and that is, I am with Councilmember Sherry on, this is a program that is a circuit breaker program meant to assist businesses in Burnsville. We are not in the loan business. We're really not in the business of the SBA, but we recognize the extraordinary circumstances that this recession has created, and the extraordinary circumstances that has changed our financial institutions. And Mr. Neenhouse was dead on, and I experienced it myself many times, what used to be a signature loan years ago is a no today. And it is, it's not that we necessarily are the only ones that can get in this business. There can be, you know, this could be a private venture with some venture capitalists who want to put these loan guarantees in for significant fees, but I believe it's an idea that has a purpose, but a short-term purpose during an extraordinary time that we are in, to help get some loan activity going. Because absolutely positively, that is the backbone of this recovery. Banks have got to figure out a way to lend businesses that have great due diligence, great business plans, great histories, they got to put some money so they can expand. And I think the timing of this is good, and that's maybe why we're doing it.
So, you're supportive?
Yes.
Okay, because one of the things is that I like the fact that we're reviewing this every year. That's the key for me, that we're reviewing it every year. And the other is that we're guaranteeing at a very small amount, but the only other part that I wanted to know is that, how do we keep this moving? Now, I also know that when we had a revolving loan account, it wasn't used very often. And we finally said, okay, we're going to take that money and put it back, and this came from our CDVG funds. And we had set aside funds for revolving loan. Well, the businesses didn't use it. But this is a different time, and we must look at it, and every year, we can review it with all of you. Gene, you had a question or a comment to make?
No, I just want to comment to Councilmember Keely, that you've seen no upside. I believe there is an upside, and that's bringing the businesses along.
Oh, yes, sorry, no immediate fee-related upside or replacement, but yes, the upside is the economic impact to Burnsville for those businesses getting access to capital that they would otherwise not get if it not were for this.
There is another, the other upside, Councilmember Keely, is the expansion of a business in Burnsville. That is, when you expand your footprint, that is more money for us on a different side. And then, when you're bringing in more employees there, we don't get any of those income taxes, it goes to the state, but it also keeps the economy going through the purchasing power of the new employees and the consumer.
Absolutely, you can say it, it's jobs and the economy.
That's right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at, it's jobs.
This is a help, right.
This is what I'm looking at, it's the expansion of jobs, and that's what we're trying to do here in Burnsville. Ken?
Mayor, your comment about the revolving fund and it wasn't used, you know, I don't think we can get so exuberant that this is, we're going to have people knocking on our door tomorrow morning.
That's right.
Because I don't, we don't have any real proof that the small business entrepreneurial types are going to clamor for this, but rather, if it's bank-led, I think that helps in that whole arena of due diligence, because the bankers know who's solid and who isn't. And this body, it's none of our business.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, until an application is brought forward. So, that's all I had to say.
Anything else? Are you comfortable with us giving direction to staff to bring back this policy for adoption at a council meeting?
Mm-hmm, I am.
Okay. I would like to make one change, then if you go to the policy guidelines, and this is the creation of the incentive loan guarantee. And so, that first sentence where it says, the city of Burnsville Economic Development Authority shall consider the creation, we will no longer shall consider a creation, it's now create a loan guarantee program. Does that make sense?
I just want to, a close comment on this particular subject. The Economic Development Commission has existed in its current form and its prior form. I have to say, this is one of the most meaty and meaningful outcomes of our esteemed members, because, you know, this is, this was not an easy one philosophically for a lot of people, I'm sure. It was not an easy one to tackle, and I think they did outstanding work, thank you very much. This was a big one, I wasn't sure we'd actually get this and across the finish line, because it was not easy for the government to get into this kind of business.
Yeah. To all of the members, Ken, the Chair of the EDC, and to all of the members of the EDC, thank you very much, because you've held many meetings, and I have watched some of your meetings, and you did some very thoughtful and asked some very tough questions about staff. And I even liked the fact that you continued to send them back and say, bring us back these information. No, no, there is not enough, please bring us back more information. So, thank you for all of your work and for the due diligence that you did, and the capacity of your intelligence and knowledge and wisdom to getting us to where we are. Because what you've done is given us all of the work done for us to now say, yes, this is a product that we can move forward, and that when our citizens ask us, why are you doing this? We can say, many people worked on it, and it wasn't just us, but we had the collective intelligence and wisdom of the people of this community. So, thank you very much to all of you and to our staff, who did a lot of the research in going and talking to people and to the bankers and everything. So, thank you so much, because when either we or the commissioners say, could you please bring back information in this domain of, you did. So, the brain trust that we have at City Hall is exceptional, and I thank you. And the brain trust on the commission is exceptional for the community of Burnsville. Thank you. Yes.
Madam Mayor, I just want to echo your gratitude to staff. I know both of you go back with this, this was brought up, I don't know, two years ago. I mean, it's been through a couple different iterations, and you stayed with it, and the EDC stayed with it as well. And so, thank you, this was a long road to get here, and like I said, I wasn't sure we'd ever get it into the end zone, but I'm glad with the outcome, and I'm glad we have the support of our private sector volunteers, highly-paid volunteers on our EDC.
Rich?
Yes, Matt, and Mayor, and staff, and council, thank you. Thank you for being receptive to these ideas. They're a little bit radical. Very honestly, yeah. But thank you for...
Being open?
Open and receptive to all of those ideas. This will be the best thing for the city and the business in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Forgive me for...
Thank you.
May I just take on there, and that is that, well, we could be receptive, because you all just turned over every possible rock there was, and looked at the dark side of every rock. It was wonderful, thank you very much.
Well, and also to the members of the mayor's roundtable, because we also talked about this access to capital with all of those bankers that sit around there, and they too were always saying, we have lots of money, we want to, we want to make, we want to make loans, but the constraints of the new regulations don't allow us to do that, and so, this will help.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, and now we move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you, Jim. And members of the council, we have Mr. Richard Tucker, the President of the St. Paul Area Association of Realtors, who's going to come and talk to us about our housing market update from St. Paul Area Realtors Association. And Richard, it's always good to see you, and you know what, I'm looking forward to a great report from you.
Well, I think we've got some good things to share.
Yes, so thank you for coming and telling us. So, but first of all, what is this that I hear you're moving your office? Why are you doing that?
Madam Mayor, I was hoping that that was not going to... Unfortunately, if you wear my other hat, which is my Cullow banker hat, yes, we are, the powers that be above me have decided that our lease is up, our building is for sale, and our lease is up, and so they have decided to move to a new location, which is outside of the city limits of Burnsville, I guess I should say.
I am very, very upset about that.
However, let me assure you, as I've said to all of my agents, we have had this building in this community for probably 20 years.
Yes, and it's an iconic kind of Burnett building.
And although we weren't actively involved in the community until these last couple of years, and that commitment to stay actively involved in the community is going to continue. So, even though the building may move, our involvement with the community is going to continue, and we will continue to do that, and so...
Thank you, I will continue to...
I still live here.
Yes, and I will email and make sure...
Yes, and you will continue to keep it.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Richard Tucker, President of the St. Paul Area Association of Realtors, welcome.
What I wanted to do is take an opportunity to kind of give you an overview about what's going on in the housing market and give you a little bit of context, talk a little bit about sales, inventory, and median sales prices on the overall Twin Cities perspective, and then look at it specific to Burnsville. And then, when we look at it in Burnsville, we're going to be able to slice it a little bit by short sales foreclosures, traditional sales, and then a little bit by price range as well. So, if we look at just the top part, and I'll look at it this way, if you look at the overall Twin Cities market, and I can't see that far enough away, so I'm going to have to use my page here, the thing that you notice in terms of home sales is that when we really peaked, we had 60,000 units selling at the top of the market. And you can see where we really crashed down to 2008, where we were at 39,000 units. We had the stimulus that bounced it back up to about 45,000 units, and now we're starting to have an increase, we were at 41,000 units in 2011. So, we're starting to see a little bit, but we're about 2/3 of where we were in terms of units sold.
Wow.
If you go to the next page, where we look at the inventory, and this is really the, you know, at its core, real estate is a supply and demand business. And if you take the financing issues out of the equation, what we really had was, when this thing started back in 2001, 2002, we really didn't have an awful lot of inventory for sale in the Twin Cities marketplace. In this case, we had about 15,000 units. We actually peaked overall at about 36,000 units in the Twin Cities marketplace. So, we had an awful lot of inventory, and when the bubble burst and we had so much inventory, it really just cascaded downward, and so, we started to see the sales drop off. The nice part is, the inventory has dropped off, and so now we're looking at about 16,000 units for sale. And so, what that does to pricing...
This is in a Twin City 11-county metro area?
This is 11-county metro area.
Okay, 11-county metro.
Right.
Okay.
There's a screen here in front of me, yes. And so, what you're now looking at is the real tagging off, or tailing off, rather, of the median sales prices. And so, we were at about 230,000, and we dropped down to about 150,000. But the one thing I want to remind you, as we look at the numbers, is what the definition of the median sales price is, because it's significant when we look at the volume of sales within price ranges. Median is half sold above and half sold below that price range. It does not mean that everybody's average value dropped by that percentage, and it's important to recognize that, because if somebody bought a $300,000 home in 2007 or 2008, it does not mean that it dropped by 50%. That's specific to a neighborhood or to a property, but we had a lot more sales below that price range because of foreclosures, and that's really what drives those numbers. So, if we take a look at Burnsville, and the Burnsville number, closed sales on a rolling 12-month basis, we were up 26% over last year, or over 2010, and this is rolling 12 months. So, through March, up 26% at 783 units sold in Burnsville. If you look at the next slide, which is the inventory coming into the system, we're down 19%. Those two things, from a sales perspective, are very positive, because we're having less inventory come into the market, the units that we did have on the market are being absorbed, people are buying them. And so, what you get, and I'll show you on the next slide, what you get is fewer properties on the market. And so, we're down from 448 properties on the market to 331 properties on the market in Burnsville. So, that is really a pretty significant drop as we've come down. Yes, Councilman Chair?
And this slide that you're showing right now, is this for 2012? Oh, no, you see, no, I see 09.
This is currently, this particular number is a snapshot, homes for sale.
So, this is '09, meaning 2009?
April '09 to March of 2010.
2010, okay.
And April 2010 to March 2011, so this is the month-over-month or year-over-year, same picture.
Annual rolling, right, okay.
And so, this is, this is, the other picture was a rolling 12-month of what was coming into the market. This is what's currently for sale today as a snapshot of 331 units, okay?
Okay.
Madam Mayor, a question?
No, now, those reports that I receive on a monthly basis, and I received the report, and I was thinking, now I'm understanding what the numbers are saying.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, now, if you go to the next page, this talks about home sales by price range, and so what you're looking at is, first and foremost, that the homes for sale by price range are down. And then, again, we talked about that being an important statistic. As we look at it by price range, so this is about approximately $140,000 and below is the first column. And so, you can see that we had a real jump-up in the 2010 market, particularly in the lower price ranges, we had a lot of inventory increase. We had a lot of inventory increase. And then, we see 130 units in that price range for sale right now. And then, as we go up the price scale, you see we have fewer and fewer homes for sale. And they're down considerably where we were. If you go back to where the first period, April '09 to March of 2010, you can see on the 255,000-unit price range and above, we had something like 96 units for sale. So, we had an awful lot of what we would consider for Burnsville, upper bracket, properties for sale. We're right now running at about 52 units for sale. Okay? So, we're come down on the inventories across the board.
Yeah. Oh, that's close.
However, you go to the next page. You'll see the big gray bar that jumps right up, and that is, this is closed sales by price range. And what you see is that in that lower price range, that's where we had all the activity. We had almost half of the closed sales occurred under 139,000.
Were these any of the foreclosure properties?
Yes, and we'll break that out in a moment. But you'll see that. That's correct. Some of that's short sales, some of that's foreclosure. But this is, this takes in single-family condos and townhomes. And so, as you look at that, which explains why the median price is down so much, because so much of the sales were below 139,000. And one of the other things that you talked earlier, it was very interesting to listen to your earlier discussions relative to rental density and some of that. But one of the things that you have that you probably aren't able to account for, to be really candid, is you have probably more rental units than you're aware of.
Oh, yes.
Simply because you have a lot of people who were investors, who bought a lot of these foreclosure properties or short-sale properties for cash and are renting them with the anticipation of flipping them in a couple of years when the market improves, and they're able to do that. But they're going to rent them for a couple of years. And so, you've got a fair number of those that you're probably not even seeing anywhere.
Dan Gustafson?
Wouldn't we pick those up on our rental licensing applications?
You would. I would suggest possibly that not everybody has complied with that. That's just a possibility.
Yeah.
And so, in any event, as you look at that, you get a better sense of where the closed sales were across those price ranges. Now, if we look at this, and I break this out, is this our microphone machine?
No, it's because of the, it's staticky.
Pressing the button.
I'll work faster. Okay. So, as we look at this and look at traditional sales, and we've got traditional foreclosures and short sales, this chart that you're seeing here is traditional sales, meaning not bank involvement, not a foreclosure. And so, of that 300-something units that sold, only 112 of those were a traditional sale. Okay? And then, as you look at that, clearly, the percentages were higher as we got up in the price range of traditional sales versus short sales and foreclosures. Next slide, and there it is. It really jumps out at you, is that this is foreclosures under 139,000. 201 of those sales were foreclosure properties. So, that really highlights where the foreclosures were in the community. They were under 139,000, and that's really where a lot of that took place. As you go up in the upper price ranges, for example, over 255 in price range, only 14 of those properties that sold were foreclosures. So, it does kind of highlight where we had the problem. If you go to short sales, again, a large percentage of the short sales were in the lower price ranges. And as we move up in price range, you see that start to drop off. The nice thing, particularly in the upper price ranges, for the most part, is it's dropping below prior year as well.
Nice.
Yeah.
Now, if you, the next slide is really trying to look at the type of property. And what I mean by that is, is it a single-family? Is it a condo? Or is it a townhome? So, we're kind of looking at the same set of numbers from a different angle. And so, in this case, of the all-price ranges, single-family, 187 of those were single-family properties. And of that, 140 of that was foreclosure, and 48 of those were short sales, again, by single-family property. If you go to the next slide, and we look at it by condos, you can see we had a pretty good jump on the foreclosure side of the condos. They jumped up, but so did the traditional sales of condos jumped up. So, you see on both sides of that, short sales jumped up significantly as well. And then, the last piece of this is townhomes. And you can see, townhomes actually did pretty well as a traditional sale. There was almost as many foreclosure. But to be really candid, I thought that this would have been skewed more towards foreclosure on the townhome. So, they actually kind of held their own a little bit, again, across all price ranges. And then, these are the short sales. So, the last slide is really the median price range. And the median price range, if you look at it, and I really have tried to break it down across the different areas. For traditional sales, our median price range is about 220. For the foreclosures, it's down. It's about 166. And again, you saw that because of the preponderance of homes under 139 that sold. And then, as you look at the last part, where we go into short sales, that's running about 170. It's down, but it's not quite down as much as foreclosures, but pretty close. So, that's kind of taking it and slicing it by a couple of different angles. If you were to look at, for example, homes over a half a million in Burnsville, just currently on the market, we've only got eight. So, you know, the bulk of the Burnsville market tends to be skewed 255 and below, to be really, that's really where we have the bulk of it. And in this marketplace, because of prices have come down, you know, that's really where we see more and more of that. So, I'll share with you some conclusions that, as you said, is it a good story? Well, I guess, from my perspective, it is. Sales are up, and people are out buying. We're seeing that. And in what we've just come through, and, for example, in March, we had a very, very strong march in Burnsville. We had a lot of people out. We had a lot of sales. And what we're seeing is, as you look at sort of the base, and let's, you know, there's probably 20% of the listings that are out there are really in rough shape. They're tired, to put it bluntly. And they're kind of just sort of holding that place. And as we get new inventory coming in the market, homes that are priced according to the market and that are in nice shape, we're seeing them go off the market in as quick as two weeks, a month. It's not unusual. We're seeing multiple offers on properties. When we have our discussions in Tuesday mornings about what people are looking for, we've got a lot of people with buyers that are looking for properties that we're not finding in the market, because the inventory has really come down dramatically, and we're really struggling, in some cases, to find properties for people to buy. And so, buyers are ready, and that's a positive thing. Interest rates are fabulous, so that's a positive thing. The restrictions are not as difficult as people make them out to be. You do have to have a reasonable credit score, and you've got to have, you know, with FHA three-and-a-half percent down, which is not unreasonable. So, the guidelines are not crazy. And so, we're finding that people are able to get financing. We're actually, oddly enough, finding a little bit of a challenge to find inventory, which is crazy because of what we've come through. So, the inventory levels are down. They need to continue to stay down. The percentages that are bank-mediated are up, but what we're finding is that there's a real appetite to get those foreclosures off the books. And so, we're finding investors who have cash, as well as other people who are able to get financing, are really absorbing those properties and taking them off the books. As I said before, remember what the definition of median is, so don't come away with this and sort of, oh, my God, my house has gone down by 30%. It's not necessarily the case. And I think the last piece of our marketplace, we will see home values go up, because, as I said, it's a supply and demand business. As we get a reduction on supply and a little bit of an increase in demand, it puts pressure on prices. But prices will be the last piece of this component. They'll be the last piece that you'll see recover. And the other part of this is, so much of this is a self-fulfilling prophecy. And if consumer confidence continues to grow, and it's not growing by leaps and bounds, but it's slowly but surely increasing, and as that continues to do that, people will feel that now's the time to go out and, from a housing perspective, go out and do something. So many people, I think, watched this market and wanted to buy at the bottom, and waited and waited for the bottom. The reality is, you never know when the bottom is until you look backwards. It's only something you can see in your rearview mirror. And I think people, my sense is, are starting to believe that we have actually passed that bottom, and that we're starting to move in a positive direction. And we're seeing, that's why we're seeing, I think, a little bit of a flurry of activity. People are trying to get out there and get there before rates go up and before they start to see prices go up. So, I think it's a positive situation at the moment.
Well, it's a great story. Councilmember Keating?
Sure.
In your opinion, based on the trends that you see, when do you believe it's going to be a seller's market once again?
You know, it is already in some little pieces. For example, if you've got a home that's maybe 170 and below, that is a traditional sale, that's in good condition, you know what? Right now, you'd probably get multiple offers on that property. Because what you're competing against is a lot of the bank-owned stuff that might not be in great shape. So, in some segments, we're already starting to see that shift. Our, as you look at our month's supply of inventory, and I don't remember the exact number, but typically, 4.5% to 6% is considered a balanced market. We're under that on those lower price ranges right now. We're under that number in terms of month's supply of property. Because you looked at the number of properties coming into the marketplace, and when you saw that huge number of properties that were purchased in that, we're not filling that back up to the same level. So, you're starting to see that. The other question that comes into play is the shadow inventory, which you'll read about in the press as to whether or not there's really a wave of foreclosed properties coming after the settlement for the robo-signings. Minnesota is not, does not look like we're going to see a big increase in that genre. Nevada, parts of California, certainly Florida and some other places, I think, will. We're not, as you look at the bank mortgage, delinquency rates and everything else, it doesn't look like we're going to be hit with a big shadow inventory piece here. So, I think they're starting to trickle it in. The other part of that is, it's being sold in short sales before it shows up as a foreclosure. So, we're starting to see that absorbed as well.
Okay.
Well, it's all good. As you said, Madam Mayor, it's a lot of stories similar to this, and hope that we'll see our values start to turn around and start going back the other direction.
I think we will. Now, the reality is, that won't go up quickly because of appraisals based on six-months properties that will keep a governor on it. So, your banks are not going to, you're not going to have this wild jump, but it will move in a positive direction, and I think that's where we're going.
Great. Thank you.
Mary? I thought, oh, you had. Great news, and thank you for delivering that.
Happy to.
And we really appreciate everything that you do to help Burnsville. And I can't tell you what a great partner you've been. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We'll continue to be.
Yes, thank you so much, Richard. And thank you for coming in on this.
And wearing my other hat.
Carrying your evening.
Wearing my other hat.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is with, for the Storm Drainage Utility Ordinance and Policy Update, and our Public Works Director, Steve Albrecht, is presenting. Mr. Albrecht, good to see you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item tonight is just to briefly go through the council, go through with the council some changes we're proposing to the Stormwater Utility Ordinance and then the policy. We'll keep it real short. We're not going to go through a PowerPoint, because for the most part, this is housekeeping. However, it has been 20 years since the city addressed this policy. Actually, we were joking with Craig, because Craig wrote the first policy, and this was actually one of the first stormwater policies-
In 1992.
In the state of Minnesota back in 1992. So, he was very much avant-garde as it comes to stormwater policy. And for the most part, what we're recommending tonight is really some housekeeping that moves, some specific things that are in the ordinance that really should be in the policy that gives staff a little bit more flexibility, and I'll quickly go through those. Number one, we're looking at how we calculate the runoff rates, which is how we set the rate for a given property, to move that to our policy. It's much better managed in that. As technology and the methods we use change, then we don't need to go back and revise our ordinances. We can make minor tweaks to our policies to adapt to that. Also, just how we establish our REU. What we're doing here is, we typically, in our other utilities, water and sewer, we establish those at the staff level, and then the council approves those annually. The way that we do REU calculations in this is a little outdated in that when we do changes, it's supposed to come back to the council as an individual change for an individual property. One thing that that does do is it doesn't provide flexibility for staff to react. If a property comes in and wants a change, it could be a month or two before we're able to actually implement that change because of the process that it has to go through. So, we think that's an expedited way that's also consistent with how we're operating our other utilities. We wouldn't be doing something different than the other than how we're treating our SAC and WAC connection charges in our sewer and water funds. So, that's one of the changes. And then, the last big change is the recalculation of charges. And this is something a little bit new in that we're giving some specific guidelines as to when charges can be recalculated to allow some flexibility with properties, specifically properties that may be kind of what we're going to call a redeveloped state or waiting for redevelopment. Under our current policy, once a property is developed, it's viewed as developed. There isn't a lot of flexibility for staff on adjustments. What this allows us to do is recognize that maybe they've removed all the buildings from a property or all the impervious surface, so that even though we can't necessarily take it back to zero, because typically, a site, once it's been developed, the soils are compacted, we do get runoff. But we do have some flexibility now to reduce that rate down to 60% of what it was before, which would be, what we did is we looked at what would mimic those soil conditions. So, it does allow us to provide some relief to property owners that are sitting in a redeveloped state until they redevelop the property. And so, that's one of those significant changes.
Just like lifetime fitness.
Yeah, exactly. That would be a good example. We have several properties around town where there isn't a structure necessarily anymore, and it's sitting vacant, and they're paying what we would deem charges, that we don't have flexibility to give them a fair reduction. And so, with what we've done in the policy is we've given staff the ability, based on information that needs to be provided by the property owner. The city isn't going to go do these calculations, but they can provide the information. If the numbers add up, then we can make the according recommendation and reduction. Very similar to how we would handle SAC and WAC charges with a facility. Anytime a building changes uses, they look at their SAC and WAC charges, and those are either adjust, stay the same. The SAC units go up maybe if there's more intensive use, or they could go down. This allows us to handle this in the same way if that use goes down.
Okay, Mary?
Just for those who are watching, would you just talk, explain what SAC and WAC mean?
Sure. We have, the city of Burnsville uses sewer connection charges and water connection charges, which are our SAC and WAC charges. The reason that we use that is that's what the Met Council also uses as their basis for establishing sewage flows from a business. And so, we try to be consistent with that.
And that's all I wanted to explain.
Yep, sorry. Sometimes you throw that around.
Oh, yeah.
People don't know what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking inside speak, and we have a citizenry that's watching and saying, "So, what is that?"
Although, you'd be surprised how many of them are very familiar with SAC and WAC charges. Many businesses, we have to deal with that.
Actually, a lot of them are.
Yeah. Because they see it on their bills.
Exactly. So, with that, those are really the changes we've recommended. So, we've pulled those items out of the ordinance and, for the most part, replicated those in the policy. And so, as I said, for the most part, housekeeping. We do have a little more flexibility to, I think, be more customer-friendly and look at what the real conditions are on a property, more than saying, "One size fits all for everybody, and this is how we're going to treat all the properties."
Actually, it made a lot of sense to me in looking at the background and looking at the new policy. It just made sense. It gives you that flexibility, and it is consistent with all of our other policies, so.
And it also formally recognizes all the circumstances whereby we think property owners shouldn't necessarily pay. If they have a pond that they built that receives public water, and historically, it had to be a public pond to get a reduction on that, we don't think they should be paying REUs or our equivalent stormwater units on something that's receiving and treating stormwater. And so, that also is built into this, too. So, with that, I would take any questions the council has. We will be bringing this to a future council meeting, because it is an ordinance amendment, so we have to move that forward in that manner.
Okay. Any concerns, any questions? Bring it forth the next meeting. So nicely done. It's, it makes sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Craig wrote a good policy.
Yeah.
It stood the test of time. And I'm not just saying that. I already have my review, so that doesn't give me.
Well, actually, and all of the updates that you brought forth in terms of making sure that we're, we're resident-friendly and we're business-friendly and all of these issues, so, and it's consistent, so very well.
I'm just down the hall from Skip and Jenny, and they're constantly pounding on public works. You've got to be business-friendly, so. So we try to find a good, happy medium that meets all the needs.
Very good. Well, thank you. Okay, our next item is the update on the Xcel Energy Project, and Steve, our Public Works Director, and Jenny, our Community Development Director, are giving us that update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Jenny's here to provide backup if this goes above my intelligence level as far as the, the Public Utilities Commission goes, which can get very complicated. We wanted to provide you with an, an update because there's another Xcel project that's kind of taken flight a little bit, and we want to make sure the council's aware of where we are with all the Xcel projects, because it can be confusing both to city staff and the public with so many things going on with Xcel. So we thought that we would give you a brief presentation just to give the council a feel for where Xcel is with their various projects. The repowering project. Most are aware that the repowering project is on hold. However, the repowering project is not officially dead, as we would call it. Xcel requested to withdraw the project back in December of last year. However, the PUC, the Department of Commerce, is still reviewing the data provided by Xcel, because their job is to protect the state, to make sure we have adequate energy, energy sources to meet our needs. And so they are currently evaluating whether they agree with the numbers that Xcel is providing, that we won't need this additional power in 2016. Until that is done, this, officially, this project is still moving through the process. And so we wanted to make everyone aware of that, because some people have seen that and said, well, I thought that project was done. Well, technically, the project is not done, and, and so a decision by the Department of Commerce and an administrative law judge, which helps run that process with the PUC, is forthcoming, and Xcel is hopeful, because of those forecasts, that they'll be extended out, and this will be withdrawn at this time. But we wanted to make everyone aware that that hasn't formally happened, even though Xcel has withdrawn their application, so.
And to our listening audience, PUC is the Public Utilities Commission.
That is correct. And they get to determine when we build plants, where we build plants, because they're looking out for the entire state of Minnesota, not just Burnsville or another city, and they certainly aren't looking out just for the interests of the power company. They want to make sure that everyone's interests are being best met, so they're trying to balance that, and that's what's going on now. The second project we want to talk about is our, our bridge, and where that project is at. The bridge design has been completed. All the permits have been obtained. We're, we're still working out the details of our development contract or development agreement with Xcel Energy. I think it's been a very long process. I call this my, my career project, because I started on my first week here at the city, and I'm still working on it. So with that, though, I believe, and Jenny can, can pipe in, too, we, we feel we're very close. We're down to, to some minor details on that. It is Xcel's hope and our hope, staff-wise, to be bringing that forward to the council for your review and consideration in May. This agreement is a very broad agreement. If it was just dealing with the bridge, we would have been here many months ago. But what we're doing with this is, because this is such a big agreement and there's so many pieces to it, we've, we aren't going to move forward on the bridge until we, we are sure that we have all the details worked out. This is a big, you know, Xcel's been on that site for 60 years, and so there's a lot of things that, over that 60-year period, that we want to get straightened out, because who knows? It could be another 60 years before we have that type of conversation with Xcel. Some of the items that are included is not just the funding of the bridge, but we also want to address current plating issues. There are some property issues that we're trying to get straightened out with Xcel, and we believe we've come to some agreement on that, along with how park dedication and some of those things factor in. Our future trail, we've got a regional trail planned in that area. We've got grant dollars coming down the pipeline. We want to make sure that we're on the same page with Xcel, because they do own the property, even with any easements. And so Terry's been working very hard with Xcel to work out the details on that. As a matter of fact, at your next council meeting, Terry's going to be bringing forward some authorization that was originally planned for next year, but to move forward the preliminary design of the trail. And the reason for that is it's important for us, as our agreement with Xcel, we need to know where the easements are needed for that trail. And because it's a river-bottom area, there's wetlands everywhere, it's not an easy trail, you just can't build this trail. It's, it's a very environmentally sensitive area. And so after looking at that, staff believes it's important to at least complete the preliminary design of the trail this year, before we get the easements granted, to make sure we have easements in the right place. Xcel agrees with that. They've laid out, they've, they've shown some flexibility with us, some willingness to allow us to go into some other areas to get the trail away from the plant and power lines. And so we want to take that opportunity, make sure that's where the trail should go. And so you'll see an item on your upcoming agenda related to that. Originally, that, those design services were scheduled for next year. Those design services, we're going to move forward. The money's there, it's just in the CIP, it was identified for next year. We want to move those forward to this year, so we can get that done to make sure we do get the correct easements from Xcel for that trail. So that item will be moving forward. Road ownership is a big conversation for the city. We've got a three-plus-mile road that is in very poor condition. Half of that road is in extremely poor condition because of all the flood damage. We removed about 7,000 yards of silt off of that road that's stockpiled, that we still have to haul out of the site. But once we remove that and revealed what was left of the road underneath, the road's in tough shape, and we're going to have to have some conversations as part of this agreement. What's best long-term for Burnsville? Do we need to have a city street in that location, or does having trail access with parking areas and all of the, the natural amenities meet our needs, allow the road really to go back to Xcel, which is the primary user of the road, to be maintained as a private road? That's going to be a topic of our development contract agreement that we bring forward to the council. If it does remain a city street, there's a significant amount of city investment that would be needed at some point, along with Xcel's investment, to bring that road up to standards and to be able to preserve it long-term. So that's something that we will talk with the council about, and we've been working out the details of that with Xcel. They're open to, they understand the, the future issues with that road, and so we want to make sure we still meet the needs of our residents and our businesses, but do it at the smart cost and not take on something that we really shouldn't have and couldn't and can't afford. And then the last item that we're working out in that detail is, if and when the repowering occurs, we want to take this opportunity to lay the groundwork for the 12th Avenue Extension and make sure, if and when that facility is improved, we have laid out the solution and how we're going to handle traffic to that facility long-term and provide them a flood-free access. And so that is still on the table. That design is done. We're just laying out the mechanisms. It's a, it's a rather creative process that our finance department and, has been working on, along with our attorneys, to make sure that the city is protected long-term and that there's a way to build that road. And so that will be part of the agreement, too. So the good news is, there's a lot in this agreement, and we're hopeful to have it to you soon, because I don't want to be working on this for another year, so.
If I can, there's a couple other pieces of this that get to memorandums of understanding and some operational issues with, with Xcel. One of them deals with public safety, so we've come to an understanding, memorandum of understanding, on how we'll deal with public safety and emergency management, if and when it occurs. And you handed out some great awards at your last meeting that dealt with the, the last major incident that was out there. So we want to have a handle on how we'll deal with those in the future in a more organized fashion. We hope they never happen, but if they do, we're as best prepared as we can be. So we've got a memorandum of understanding for public safety and also for permits, on when permits are needed or not. There's, there's always a dis- dissonation between the power company and the city as far as when permits are required or not. They think they're exempt from a lot of things, and they're not. And so we have come to an understanding on what things they'll come in and get permits for and what things they are exempt. So those have been worked out, and that will be included in this overall agreement. So we're very happy to have those done.
Very well done, because there was some discussion with regards to their permitting and that we didn't have a say, because all of their permits will come from the PUC on, on the repowering.
That is correct.
Madam Mayor, that's what they, that's what they understand, and our understanding is a little different. So we've articulated that in these agreements.
That's the reason that's very good, that you've come to that understanding, because there was a, a misunderstanding of.
Absolutely.
Who does what. And I remember that letter that came.
It gets really back to the core of what Jenny just mentioned, the, the emergency services. Because if we're not assured that it's built properly or that it's safe, then we're sending our emergency crews into a facility potentially, and we have Xcel employees working in the facility. And, and it's amplified by the incident that we had, that we need to be sure that the things that we have jurisdiction over are safe and can be properly taken care of by our emergency services. And so it has opened, and I apologize for neglecting that, it's opened up a great dialogue between our emergency staff, our building department staff, and Xcel. And so I think the relationship is greatly strengthened by this process, too, so.
This has been very positive for us, to reiterate that. It's been very positive from Xcel's standpoint and from the city's standpoint, that we've talked about these things. We have a good relationship. There's not a lot of arguing. It's just articulating some details, is how I would describe it. So it's been very good.
Yeah, and for our residents to understand also, this whole relationship with Xcel continues to be stronger and stronger, when they would also take us on a tour to show us the difference between what the power plant is today and what it can be when it's on combined-cycle plant. And it, and it really is wonderful. So I'd really like to see us move ahead with that. But I know that they have to go through the certificate of need process, and there's a lot of things that they have to go through with the PUC and with the Department of Commerce. But after experiencing and seeing what a combined-cycle plant looks like and how clean it is, and minimizing the kind of event that we experienced in 2010, which was very dangerous for not only Xcel employees, but for ours, it would be nice to see the improved plant.
Yeah, and I, and amplifying what Jenny said, Jim Zidek, the new plant manager, has been wonderful for the city staff to work with, is very open and really wants to forge that relationship with the city. And so I think that's been important, too. So I think we're in better position with Xcel than we ever have. And I think we sometimes forget, they're a large business in town. They pay substantial property taxes in Dakota County and the city of Burnsville, and so they are one of our businesses. And we sometimes forget, because they're a utility, that they are also a business, and they are trying to act very responsibly in Burnsville, and we appreciate that, so.
They're great.
And then the last item we want to touch on is the one that's kind of on the forefront right now, is the transmission line project. And what I'll do is I'll touch on a few of the points, and I'll bring up a map that shows what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I think that would be great for our citizens to, to see also, because once they start seeing that, they'll wonder what that's all about.
And we have a public hearing, actually, coming up that I'll talk about, too. So when they see that, we want to make sure there's no confusion that that's related to the repowering project, because they are completely separate actions. Xcel is looking to rebuild about 4.2 miles of power line, of their 115K power line, and it's primarily the power lines that run through Black Dog Lake and then through the middle of the quarry. Anybody who's been down to the quarry has seen those large stone pillars with, with lines on top of them. So that's what they're looking at, at doing. Basically, their entire system from Black Dog to the savage city limits in Burnsville is, is going to be redone. Similar to the repowering project, the Department of Commerce, acting for the PUC, is running and conducting a public hearing that will be on April 18th in these council chambers at 6:00 PM, if people are interested. It's really an informational meeting. They'll make a presentation on what the proposed improvements are, and then they'll also take any input from residents or businesses in the area that are concerned. And there are some that are concerned, and a lot of it's questions about how the process works. And so that will occur. City staff is currently in the process of reviewing this project. We have a consultant assisting us. This is a rather complex process, and so we will have comments that will, that need to be submitted by the beginning of May on that, and we're trying to work with Xcel to be practical in our comments, and, and comments that are constructive for what the city's needs are. So let me jump to the map, and I can show you. First off, what I'll highlight is, this first line that'll come up is the blue line, that is the existing system. So running through Black Dog Lake and then across 35, and then right across the middle of the quarry, essentially. So what they're proposing to do is to realign that blue section with this section that's highlighted in red. And so what that does is, I'm wowing people, my very specific.
I know, it's very well done.
After not having the PowerPoint, yeah, I know. It's a pretty easy crowd to please, let me tell you.
And it's not squiggly.
Yeah, so, but what they're proposing to do is, number one, get the power lines out of the lake. That's, they're very problematic for them, being in the lake. Maintenance on them is extremely difficult. Also, if you've seen those poles, they're in very poor condition. You have, obviously, rotting and things going on there, then you have ice and all kinds, there's just a, a lot of things happening, so. But with that, by pulling those up to Black Dog Road, we obviously want to have a trail in that location in, in the future. And so that's part of our trail conversations with them, is been pulling our trail to the riverside as much as possible, to try not to have brand-new trail with power lines hanging over the top of it out in a natural area. And so we're working with Xcel. Terry's been working very hard on that loc, that area, to make sure that we preserve as much of the wooded area at the 35W end as much as possible, to make sure that's preserved. Then the second part of it, on the other side, is the quarry, the future quarry lake. Obviously, it's in our benefit not to have the lines going through a future lake. The downside to that, though, is you have to move them to one side of the lake, which means they're going to be in an area that's not, not redeveloped at this point and going to be in that area. City staff did take a look at, try to use the mouse to, to, we did look at possibly the existing corridor. If you're familiar with Northern Hydraulics and the railroad tracks, there are lines that run right through there and then through the MRQ area, we have lines that run through there. We did discuss and, and tried to see if there was an option to put all the lines in one corridor. However, our consultants advised us that, number one, it probably would not be permitted by the PUC, because you'd essentially be putting all of the power eggs in one basket if something were to occur in that corridor. You would knock out the Black Dog Power Plant completely, which is not something they'd like to see. They, they like to have those lines separated. So that was the first issue. We also inquired about burying lines. Is there a possibility to do that? Probably not feasible, something we're still interested in hearing more about. When they're buried at this power capacity, they need to be cooled, and so it's a very expensive process. It's also a reliability issue for the power companies. They like to have those lines in the air where they can see them and, and better maintain them. And so something we're exploring with them. I, I don't hold out hopes that we're going to see anything of that nature. I think we're stuck with lines being moved, and most likely being moved to the alignment that we showed you. They do, however, have some challenges. The north side of the quarry, they are going to have to work with the McGowan property and the landfill property, because if you've been up in that area, it's a sheer cliff, basically, in the quarry, and there's not a lot of room there. And so that's going to be some challenges. They're going to have to work with some property owners in that area to bring those lines in. So we, and we're encouraging that, because we think it makes, makes sense, obviously, to work with them. Anything you can do to minimize those visual impacts for the future redevelopment and landfill area is, obviously, would be great, because those power lines are going to be there forever, and whatever you redevelop, the, the value may be somewhat diminished by those views. So that's important. And then we're also working with them to make sure that the lines are located, not to restrict our future trails and roadways in those areas, and to make sure that we can build what we have planned, because these are huge poles. These aren't our small poles that we can just hold and support or build a little rotating wall around. These are things that have very strict building regulations. And so we're trying to get all of those issues out on the table. I think we'll, we'll be able to deal with those. But it's just for everybody in the public, in the audience knows, they are moving forward this transmission line project. So if you hear about that, it's not the power plant, it's the transmission line project and those lines do need to be redone. I think from a, a viewpoint of Black Dog Lake, it's going to improve the lake not having those lines because they will take those down. That's our recommendation and we believe they're going to follow through on that to remove those from the middle of the lake because they are kind of an eyesore out in the middle of the lake too. So Jenny, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, that's it.
Okay, so that's, that's our kind of update on Excel. We take any questions, council has.
Any questions? Okay, very good. And thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing with Excel. Very well done. Thank you. Okay, and now we are at roundtable. Mary, you have anything?
Nothing. I think I'm just storing things up for summer. Well, I have lots to say, so I don't have, I, I, the only one, the only group that's meeting regularly that I'm attending is the Burnsville Community Foundation and there's no new development there. And multifamily housing, I'm all to that, but I've been going to those. I don't think, there must be one coming up. Is there one coming up? Multifamily housing?
That's on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, I think it is too. So I have nothing, I have nothing to report.
Okay, Dan?
I'm with Mary, I'm good.
Dan? Kay?
Are you yielding time for me?
Thirty-five.
I have 30 minutes.
Lucky you.
I, the MBTA had a board retreat and I took some notes. And that's just three pages, that's all.
How about just the major things?
I'll do it exactly.
Is that eight font?
I have to drive back to Red Wing tonight after.
Oh, wow.
So just some quick, quick facts. They have 118 buses with MBTA, 16, 160 drivers and staff, 600 in vehicle, 650 vehicle hours a day. 2011 ridership was 2.6 million, which was up 6% and close to the record in 2008. Runs on about an $18 million budget. The little, little fact in comparison, the fleet, their, their now number of miles driven between maintenance on the buses is 28,000. It used to be 16,500. And just by comparison, Metro Transit hopes to get to 6,100 between maintenance stops. We take very good care of our buses and, and our buses last a lot longer and are far better condition. I say that because we lease them from that council. And they are sold at auction after we're done with them, after a period of time. The condition of our buses is really good. And we should, I believe, we should be incentivized for, for turning over buses after 12 or a few more years of service that are in the condition that our buses are compared to other buses. We are not. We just essentially at the end of the lease turn them over and we are not given any financial incentive back for turning over some outstanding condition buses which gain a larger auction bid than by comparison. So some interesting key facts. This was day one of a, a two-part or part one of a two-part board retreat. The next day we get together, it'll be about a month from now, we'll get into some more strategies and tactical decisions on, on those strategies. But this was used as a, an informational day. And I have to say at the end of it, I wish they'd have done this as a new board member orientation because each department head went through a, a presentation and it was more information than I had ever known about MBTA. And I wish that I had gotten this when I sat on the board for you. Because it took me a year to absorb half of it and I just, and then another year or so to, to really kind of get up to speed. And then, and then this comes along. And so I said, we should have videotaped this and then whoever gets on, the new board member, they can sit and watch it. It was, it was lengthy.
The facts would be a little different also, more improved.
Yes, a lot, yes. Big study has been going on, a strategic improvement analysis with focus areas on routes and ridership.
One of the things you might want to say is that how many actual staff members MBTA has because it outsources all of the, its functions.
Yes. I'm very proud to be a part of the MBTA. As a member of the private sector, getting into public elected life, I, I believe very strongly in outsourcing functions, work and not bringing everything in-house and having to then grow the workforce, grow the liability, grow the benefits, costs, et cetera, et cetera. You have the maximum flexibility and the maximum efficiency when you outsource as much as you possibly can. There are 11 employees overseeing an $18 million budget with all of those passengers and, and, and equipment and facilities and that kind of stuff. And of course, we are blessed to have Schmitty &amp; Sons as a partner handling the, the service, the drivers and whatnot because they are, their philosophy is quite different than the philosophy of Metro Transit and, and possibly other carriers. Their, their philosophy is never missing a ride. There are, one was cited, there's a transit system, I think I have a note of it, where if they're, if each day they provide 98% of the bus routes. In other words, if 2% of the buses just don't run their route, they're happy with that. That's their goal, to hit 98%. MBTA and Schmitty's is 100% and nothing less than that. And they, they cited a few years back where one route was not run. So the worst day for them, for MBTA, is a bus sitting on the side of the road or stalled. So it's, it's a wonderful organization and I, I know at some point I would step off this board and another council member would take my place. It is, it is a very enviable organization to be serving on a board and to be associated with. Some of that, that strategic improvement analysis hit some focus areas, you know, conclusions. Cedar Avenue BRT was a big part of that. I-35 Transit Way, a lot of, I don't want to go into details, but it was a very in-depth study. And the service quality delivery that I was just alluding to, they have very high standards, higher than what the industry standards actually require. And no missed trips since 2008. That's the, that was the last one. It's Boston BRT accepts a 98% daily route showing up. So 2% of the people standing out for the bus, the bus never shows up. It's pretty poor. They have an industry model for penalty and incentive program for perfect route performance and it's a monthly bonus. And it's small really in, in the, based on the size of the contract. It's a, it's a pebble compared to the size of the contract, but it's enough. And the pride that Schmitty &amp; Sons takes and the service they provide is, is really what drives it. Finance, 85% of the budget goes to Schmitty and fuel costs. And we have about a 20 to 31% fare box recovery, so the cost of operations that the fare box covers. And our, as noted, we have about 51 million in total net assets as an organization. So it was a great learning experience, filled in a lot of blanks, gave me a lot of information that I, I was not aware of. And in a month or so, when we bring in an outside strategic planning facilitator, which we're interviewing a couple, we'll get into it even deeper and, and I'll be able to bring back a report on what we're doing for the future going forward. So that's, it was a great experience as I said, so that's a capsulated version. I-35s is, is meeting day after tomorrow. And I was not at the last meeting and I think was Ryan Peterson not able to make it either. And I think he said somebody else went instead. So I'll catch up with I-35 at the next work session. That's it. Oh, garage meeting, I'm sorry. I would be reporting on the garage board meeting. They moved it from yesterday to this coming Monday, so.
So it's now going to be on the third Monday?
Just for this one month, they had to move it. They just shifted it from, shipped it back a week.
Okay, very good. Municipal Legislative Committee, that's on a quarterly basis, so I don't have a report. I gave that report last time. I did not go to the Regional Council of Mayors meeting yesterday, on Monday because we had a meeting with Youth Prize and they came here to take a look. And who is Youth Prize? Youth Prize is an organization that is doing funds for youth programs. And so I went to Mayor's Summit on, for youth. And Julie Dorshak and I attended the summit and met these folks. And you have to be invited to, to submit for a grant, or to get a grant, or to submit a grant application. And so I invited them to come to Burnsville and they came on Monday. And so I asked them to invite us to submit for a, to, to apply for this grant, which is about $100,000 for our, for the youth garage. And we gave them an insight into the concept that we're moving to with the partnership with Boys and Girls Club as well as the school district and all of that. So we presented all of that. So that went very well. We took them over and showed them the garage and where the expansion is going to be.
Wonderful.
So that was very well done. We'll now wait to find out whether we will get the invitation, but I did, but the president of the organization came on that trip because I had asked her to, to come. So my hope is that we will get that invitation and so that's where that is. Savage and Burnsville joint meeting is tomorrow. And of course, all of the metro city metropolitan agencies, that committee is in the summer. International Festival is June 16th. That meeting is tomorrow night, but we're moving along and we, in terms of our fundraising for the festival, we're doing very well. And we also are doing the dine. It's a, well, every, every restaurant does it differently. But we're going to be having a dine for funds. We're going to be at Stefano's, I think. I will send out that invitation to all of you.
I think it's Thursday.
Is that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I think it'll come out.
No, it's not May, it's coming out very soon.
Oh, it's Thursday.
This Thursday.
Is it Thursday, April 12?
It's, yeah, April 12. It's April 12. So all come to Stefano's because we will get 20% of your dinner and your, your beverage sales.
Wonderful.
So, and then from there, we're going to be at BD Mongolia. And then from there, we're probably going to be at Burger Jones. And so.
Wonderful.
Dine for funds.
Dine for funds.
Yes, so that's what we're doing in terms of the International Festival to also get funds to support the, the festival. And it's a win-win. It's driving businesses to the, to the restaurants, probably people that may not have been there in the past, but through this, we get something and the restaurant gets something. So that's what's going to be going on. And that's all I have. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, our meetings are in the last Wednesday of the month now. Okay, anything else? Michelle, you have anything? Craig? All righty. And with that, yes?
I forgot to, a quick update on the Kids Feeding Kids Heart of the City 10K, September 9th, early morning time slot will be forthcoming. The route for the 10K has been proposed by the city. We love it and it's being sent in for certification.
Oh, it's going to be, yeah, so you'll get the city-sponsored event, the legacy event?
Yes, that's, it's, it's.
Yeah, so you have, yeah.
It's, it's still a legacy event. We're just changing the route and modifying it to a 10K from a half marathon, but it's still part of the city. Its certification is for participants. And I'm not a runner, so I don't understand as much as Craig would, but there's, you get credit when you run a certified route towards some credentials of some kind. So anyway, it helps and it actually helps attract more runners. So committee is working diligently on it and it's coming together pretty nicely. We may have a local radio celebrity voice along with a race announcer. And I got a call while I was in the meeting from the celebrity voice. I'll have confirmation on that. So we'll have a, a well-known radio voice there as well. So the, the committee, which I serve on, but I'm not chairing, is a meeting every couple weeks and so progress continues to go forward and look forward to a great event during the fire muster.
So remember to go to Stefano's on Thursday for dinner.
And lunch.
And lunch.